Which stands for pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, rule call. Lana?
Here.
Rob, here, Al, here, Dan, yes, Angie?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Uh, I take it Tony's not gonna be here.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm here and Dee is here.
I'm here.
Alright. Um, first item up is appointment of new councilman. So, Aaron?
Do you want to read your letter or anything? We only received one.
We can read your letter here first.
Sure.
It's very good letter, I appreciate it. It says, "On May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Mayor and City Council, City of Rawl, Iowa. Dear Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Aaron Cox. I'm ready to express my interest in the current vacancy on the Rawl City Council. I am residing at the former home of my grandparents since returning to the Midwest in twenty twenty. Growing up in the seventies and eighties, I spent a great deal of time with my grandparents, Monk and Lucille Taylor here in Rawl. I have many fond memories of my early days here in Rawl with my grandparents. Helping grandpa at the stations, getting to walk to the grocery store down to the House of Notions where the city hall was now located. The post office, the schoolyard, play, and trips to the swim pool. Although many things have changed in the last fifty years, my return to Rawl to live has been an incredible homecoming. However, the most satisfying realization has been how much Rawl still has going for it. The incredible opportunity and the potential that lies here in our small town. My family's history in Rawl dates back to the early nineteen hundreds when my grandfather, W.G. Monk Taylor, moved here as a young child with his family in nineteen thirty-two at the age of nineteen. Grandpa opened the Royal Four Hundred Service Station, which is, which transitioned to Conical in the late fifties. Also known as Taylor Oil Company. They were the site of Rawl's first self-serve gas pump in the late seventies. Grandpa retired in nineteen eighty-three after over fifty years in the oil business. During World War Two, while grandpa was stationed overseas with the Navy Seabees, my grandmother, the SEAL, operated the station, even the tank truck, delivering to Rawl residents and farms. Later, she drove the Rawl school bus. She served on the library board and the city council as treasurer. She was active in many of local organizations. In retirement, she made her debut as Mrs. Claus in Hazelwood Witch, visiting schools, nursing homes, and hosting Rawl elementary teachers and children her home. After graduating from high school in Humble, I required, I acquired a BA in Business Administration from Briar Cliff University in Sioux City. I spent the next thirty years on the East Coast in my professional career. I have worked for multiple Fortune five hundred companies in a number of fields. My experience has been very broad, having worked in retail, fraternal insurance, computer sales, and the telecom industry. And consulting in successful build-outs of small business franchises for Sprint and T-Mobile. With the arrival of COVID and the merger of Sprint, T-Mobile, I decided the perfect storm had hit. It was my opportunity to return to my roots and return to the family home here in Rawl. After getting settled and reappointed with Iowa, the opportunity to use my vast experience led me to pursue a new adventure that is part-time with the United States Postal Service, running the Claire Post Office. Much the same manner as Lana Pratt runs the Rawl Post Office. My fresh outlook, view, and experiences since returning lead me to believe that the future of Rawl is still very bright. To this end, I would relish the opportunity to be part of help shape, helping to shape the future of Rawl as a city council member, to ensure this great city lives on for many generations. I believe my wide breadth of experiences, both large city and small town living, along with renewed fresh view of Rawl and its potential, will be an asset to the city council that will help guide our great city to thrive well into the future. Sincerely, Aaron Cox." This is the only formal interest that we received in filling the vacancy on the city council, so... We need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to appoint Aaron Cox.
Second.
To open the position. That's pretty quick.
Second's it, all in favor?
Yes.
I, you sure need to smart for this job.
Was everybody eyes?
All eyes, alright. We'll do the old...
I don't have, we can get an official one, but let's do this. Swear you in, swear at you. Raise your right hand. I'll just stand over here. I, Aaron Cox, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Aaron Cox, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the state of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability.
State of Iowa, and I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of council.
Discharge all the duties of office of council.
In the city of Rawl as now or hereafter required by law.
In the city of Rawl as now or hereafter, or hereafter required by law.
Okay, then we'll get an official one, you can go ahead and sign this, I'll be signing another one. That's just set up, there you go. Alrighty.
Alright. Aaron. So, we need to do the rule call, so...
No, just for Aaron.
Aaron, are you here?
Present.
Alright, now we have all five. Next item up is a consent agenda. This is the approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills, there are no building permits. So, approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills. So, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Lana makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Al seconds. Is there any discussion, any concerns, questions? If none, then, uh, you need a, uh, a vote, that's all. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Consent agenda approved. Treasurers report, Dee?
Month of June, I went over the bank break through facility and everything appeared to be correct. The CD report, there was three funds that earned interest. I reviewed the daily transactions and the accounts payable for the dates listed. And I reviewed the timesheets for the two payrolls and reviewed the general ledger entries for the month.
Are there any questions for Dee from the treasurer's report? Alright, do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Dan makes a motion to approve the treasurer's report, Rob's second.
Second.
Rob's second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Council's comments. Aaron, anything to say?
Nothing, it's done.
Okay. Lana?
I think mine is addressed farther than the schedule.
Alright. Al? Bob?
Doug, you're all right now.
Dan?
I had some things I was gonna say, but I think I'm just gonna pass it.
Alright. City clerk's comments.
Um, just a reminder, if you want to throw some money back into the flower fund since we used some of the money to get Terry a baby gift, or for him to get his own baby gift. And then there was something else I could say, and now I can't even remember what it was. Lost.
Are you going to get a trailer full of diapers?
Oh, um, there is a, uh, this is Pocahontas County, if you haven't already filled one out, sitting by you. This is for, this is for, um, getting an official government badge, um, through our county. Um, so let's say there's a natural disaster and you're out of town and the FEMA won't let you come back in, or some sorts of things like that, you can show your badge saying you're a government official. You need to come in to the city to help with a natural disaster. And you can use it to get like discounts on hotels, maybe other stuff. Government rate. And I will have to get your picture too, so he can see me out of the meeting and I could take your picture. Right, that's it.
Alright, um, mayor's comments. Um, I've checked with, or attempted to check with Iowa DOT on the Iowa fifteen resurfacing project out here. Unfortunately, the lead engineer won't be back in the office till tomorrow. Um, I wanna find out where we are. I know that there was a company that got the low bid, but I don't know whether they formally signed the contract yet. And we don't know when, uh, the meeting will be set up with the community to talk about when to start the sidewalk work, when to start the tree removal, and if in fact they get to the resurfacing part of the project this year. Doesn't sound promising, so I'll have to wait till I get more information from him. Um, we're still awaiting the automatic doors to be installed here in the community center. Apparently, all the parts are in, I'm told. It's just a matter of the vendor, which is, um, now going to glass to make time when they're scheduled to come down and install. Um, subject of discussion came up at the Park and Rec meeting about the gazebo over here. There's been some talk about, um, moving the gazebo from this corner. Uh, the, um, rodeo is interested in taking it and putting it down there, putting it to use. So, uh, that's something that will probably happen later this year, possibly next spring. We've also talked about the possibility of going after a grant to put up an electronic sign on the corner down here. And so, we'll be doing some research on that and, uh, seeing if it's possible to get a grant or partial grant for that. Do you know when that could sit the gazebo? How long does it take for us, when the payload, do you know?
Four, maybe five feet.
Maybe five feet, you know, that, there probably, you know, to be helping with that. It's just something we'll have to work through all the details on that. Asbestos abatement at the school, from what we understand, they're still on schedule to start that. On or about the mid part of this month. And then, once that abatement is done, which they anticipated should be less than thirty days, then we can get Al Brantway to come in and start taking the rest of the building down. When we know more about the contractor and when they plan to start, we may have all the backfill dirt that we need to backfill a hole up there. There's been some discussion, but it's nothing official yet, so, um, we'll be looking at that as we go on down the road. Let's see. I think that's about it for right at the moment. So, the next item up is utility reports. Eric, you have anything for us?
No, I'm a little bored, huh? No.
City's comments.
Nobody was listening.
Okay. And no complaint forms. Next item up is unfinished business, city Facebook account. Um, I told the council I would do some more research. I have, and basically it comes down to this. Social media companies themselves, such as Facebook and Twitter, are permitted to regulate their users and their content. The First Amendment does not prevent these entities from regulating their user's speech. The social media sites generally have terms and conditions which users must agree to before using the platform, and these conditions include permissions authorizing, uh, the companies to remove content and users when they have violated the agreement. However, public officials acting in their capacity as a public official cannot block users on social media platforms at will. But the sites themselves may do so based on their terms and conditions of use. Federal courts have deemed social media platforms used by public officials or by public agencies for official communications to be limited-purpose public forums under the First Amendment. The government, uh, may impose content-neutral policies such as deleting profanities or pornograph, pornography, and may limit discourse to the topic at hand. However, the government may not engage in viewpoint discrimination by deleting posts or blocking users solely because of these users disagree with the government's point of view. That's a little bit of background that I found. The, it seems to me, and this is just me now, that the detractors far outweigh the benefits of having a Facebook page. And I'll use a personal example. I've been alerted to a couple of Facebook posts just in recent days criticizing the city putting in the kaleidoscope down here at the park. Calling it a, basically crappy job, um, using city money, uh, when it can be better used elsewhere. And other criticisms like that. The person, that person that put that post in was pushed back on by a member of the community who said, "You apparently didn't read the newspaper article and you didn't get your facts together." And the person responded, "Well, that's what I was told." So, we open ourselves up to a bunch of gossip and misinformation. And I just don't, personally don't see where there's a benefit to having a Facebook page. Especially if we can do an electronic sign out here and, and put out news that way. We can still put out news on Channel Three, in the papers, and that way.
Phone system, email, email list.
But, I'll leave it up to the council to decide whether we wanna go forward with a Facebook page or not.
I don't have anything good to say about it. There's been enough evidence recently by someone creating one that was not official. And, uh, the email I saw was negatives. And I've got contacts with other communities and I know of one, it's very positive. The community supports it and puts positive comments and information on it. But again, we can't control what people put on there, and for that reason, I am thoroughly against a Facebook page.
Al?
The words ran out of my mouth, and by the way, that kaleidoscope down there, is that what you call it, kaleidoscope?
Yeah.
They done a technical job on it.
Yep.
They had coal bomb, done a super job building it, and the cement work was absolutely awesome. Thanks to the people of the Facebook.
Al?
I, I think there, like you said, the electronic sign, the email list, there are better ways to communicate than not end up opening the city up to nightmares.
So with that, I'll ask for a formal, um, motion not to enter into a Facebook page development this time.
So?
Alright, I have a motion by Aaron.
I got the first.
Yeah, he already, he already told me what he thought, so, um, there's no discussion needed. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. With that, I'll read a statement here. "There has been a Facebook page created that gives the false impression that it is an official Facebook page for the city of Rawl. This is not a page that is sanctioned, created, or maintained by the city, and the city wants to make this clear to the public. The city is working to resolve this problem. I'll ask the council and city employees to avoid further discussion or comment." So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. New business, sheriff's report.
Wait, told me I was gonna have a good speech. I don't think we have anything new, few nuisance items, um, nothing huge that I can work on. If you guys have anything, call us so we know what's going on. We don't know what's going on, we can't do anything to stop it. Thank you all here.
I just had a resident, um, inquire to me that they're having a hard time seeing around their corner because there is, there's a camper cart there obstructing the vision of the intersection four.
Do you want to copy that on the check session?
L?
First, no.
First, no. Is it first or is it second and L?
First.
Okay, yeah, it's first, yeah.
Is that true?
No.
Thank you. Alright, next up on the agenda.
Keep going, we've done.
Must be done for a second.
Ask all the, ask the tires, give them something to do. There we go.
Alright, um, this deals with city water service shut-off boxes or what's commonly known as curb valves or curb stops. Need, basically, I put this in the package because we have some issues with this, with this, uh, part of our municipal infrastructure. Background, the city water service utility is an aging system that has requisite recurring needs to ensure complete non-working service to the city customers and for fire safety. These include accurate accounting over water usage, the ability to isolate portions of the utility to prevent waste due to unintended breakage or damage, and to start and stop service to city customers. Problem areas have emerged that require immediate attention and action. Some have been adequately addressed, such as installation of new water meters to aid in the accurate and reliable readings. However, other problem areas need further attention, such as timely tracking of city notices and letter, letters sent out to customers, theft of city water, and the initiation of further corrective actions. So I have outlined four problems here. Problem one, property owner's responsibility for water service piping. Many are unaware of their responsibilities. Per Rawl Code of Ordinances, chapters ninety, uh, point eleven and ninety point twelve, the property owner shall bear all costs and expenses for water service piping to include the curb valve or stops from the main piping in the street to the building. Additionally, that the owner will indemnify or hold harmless any loss or damage due to installation and maintenance of piping. Further, when this piping becomes defective or creates a nuisance and the owner fails to correct the problem, the city may have to do so and assess the cost to the property. So, one suggested solution is to begin periodically to advertise the owner's responsibility. Short-term ads in the weekly newspaper, notice posted at key locations around the city, notice on the local channel, a banner link or note on the city website, recurring notice in the semi-annual RBI newsletter, and hand out advisory notices at the start of service to include a letter to the remote property owners. So, we make people aware through these actions that this is your responsibility. You bought the house, you gotta make sure this stuff works. Problem two, we have unlocated or unlocatable units, curb stops. Um, suggested solution, city utilities begin a sweep to identify and locate and map all the units. In the event the unit cannot be found, the city will take action to ensure the new unit is installed. In this instance, the property owner will be responsible for the installation cost. Problem three, non-working units. Suggested solution, continue with notices mailed and mailed certified to owners requesting reply within thirty days. Manage the notice data in an established database or spreadsheet. Share the data with the council, mayor, and city utilities on a frequent basis, or the council at least monthly, so you know what's going on. Inform the owners and tenants, the city will not allow the start of a service on properties with a known non-working unit until it is replaced. The property owner will be responsible for the installation cost, and any subsequent usage would be prosecuted as theft if it's not fixed. And lastly, there, inform the owners that any repairs, installations made to the water service lines must be inspected and approved by city utilities prior to the backfill to include proper backfilling of excavated soil. Problem four, timely notifications to property owners and owner response and tracking of issued notices. Suggested solution is the same in three, manage the notice data in the established database or spreadsheet and make sure we have reminders to check this frequently. Share the data again, at least monthly. Basically, the city needs to stay on top of this, and this is for safety. There should be a process, and I think there is, and most people just plays over it. When you buy a property, the seller is supposed to, to sign a document saying that there are no known defects to the property. And they can be held liable if that turns out to be untrue, especially if they knew. It's one thing if they absolutely did not know, it's another if they absolutely did know. And so, um, when you're buying a house, you're just not buying the structure, you're buying all the piping that goes to the house as well, and all the responsibilities of being a landlord. So, I just wanna bring these to your attention. I'm hoping that there can be a little bit of discussion here, and we can adopt some of these suggested solutions, and we can get this thing under control. We do have a few people in town who their, their water service has not, has been terminated, but the water has not been shut off due to a lack of a working valve or, uh, a valve that cannot be found. And under the rules, we have to keep charging them for their service, month to month to month. There's a couple of them up there around seven, eight hundred dollars right now. And that's not an easy thing to swallow. But, people, they have been notified, they refuse to re, to respond, and we have no choice but to go forward to try to recapture the money that's been lost. Do we know what the cost to replace one of those is? Do we have to do it? I do not know, Dee probably has an idea.
I, I, I'm gonna say, because...
It varies.
It varies. However, there's probably about three of us that would do that work. I would say my cost would be about that much. Around seven hundred dollars, depending on if they need five foot or six foot, size of the valve, those types of things. It makes a difference, sometimes all you need to do is open it up and exercise the valve, which is less expensive, of course, in that situation. But I just wanna say, as a person that owns a business that would do that, and this has happened in Clover recently, we were called by somebody to do some work there, and we decided not to do it because that person wasn't going to pay the bill. And the other person that lives in the county that would do this work was called Nix, and they called me to ask me why we didn't do the work. Well, I'm not gonna go in if I know that somebody's not going to pay me. So then that runs into another problem with this whole situation.
So, our, our city guys don't really, you guys can do it.
Somebody has to, yeah, somebody.
But I know that one of the golf course is broke and they can't shut off. But according to them, we broke it, the city broke it.
I don't either, I'd be very common. And that's one of the problems, shut off the rest of it.
And they do think Harry, he's found most of them.
I got a list of the curb stops that have been found, there's twenty-two on the list. I've found two of them and one works.
And there's twenty-two?
Twenty-two curb stops that can't be found. But I found two of them and out of the two, one works.
So how do we find the other twenty-one?
That'll detect the property on the curbs edge and to find the one.
That, that's the problem in some of those situations, you know? Some idea to start digging and trying to figure out where you think it might be assuming where the water comes out of the building or the house.
You can put the locator, the, um, gas line locator, hook it to this top of the line in the basement and trace it to the main and that'll be from the main to the house somewhere in there. There's no telling where the curb stop is.
And we've had, we've had Iowa Rural Water come down and look for them too.
Are we sure they got one?
Huh?
Are we sure they got one?
Yes.
They got one, right?
I
Oh, yeah.
Are we sure they all got it?
Yeah.
Well, I hope so, yeah.
That was a long time ago.
Well, we do know about, uh, two, uh, properties that share one and neither one of the owners are taking responsibility to fix it. So they're sharing one, so technically we can't shut one off if they shut both off.
Let me ask you, when we fix that over there, the spring over by where the female used to be, that hole who was losing all that water a month? Did that, I mean, is there water usage? Is that it or have we got curb stops too that are just one water?
No, 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 that was, that was a busted pipe or whatever, yeah, water leak break. Now, the water's been good, they haven't seen any signs of any other leaks.
But I would also mention when I worked on Friday, um, we have a resident down that had, has a major water leak in their house but called when I was working and said, well, I guess I'm paying a little bit extra this month for water and sewer. Um, like over four hundred dollars is what their bill is for the month. It was like, what, sixty-seven, five type thing, I don't know, units anyway. And I said, well, the first thing to do is probably check and turn off your inside and shut off. And then maybe check the water heater or water softener and, you know, water heaters and stools and all those things. You know, they come up with a major problem and they did have to shut off the curb stop to do work in their house. And there's none working there, that can lead to a whole nother problem. And it might be longer than a month, I mean, this isn't just, we're not talking from the city's point of view. As a resident, you sure don't want to be paying four hundred dollars a month for loss of water. You're gonna want to get that fixed right away.
And a lot of plumbers also do not like changing live plumbing.
Yes.
Well, um, in any case here, we need to take some steps, move forward, make sure that we got curb stops everywhere they work. Residents would be advised to every couple of years, get all the city guys and just have a test done. Just make sure it works and you, you, peace of mind, I guess you could say. So anyway, with, with all this that I read, um, does council have any comments about moving forward or any concerns?
So it isn't that we don't have permission to get on the property to look for it?
Well, I, I, you know, it's on the curb line of the property, probably four or five feet inside their yard. And on my list, I've searched for all those with the metal detectors and equipment. But this list that I have is probably ten years old. These curb stops could be found by previous.
We would prefer to work with the residents to minimize their costs and alleviate all the headaches, but residents need to understand that if you have a responsibility, you need to take care of it. And if you can't take care of it, we will. People will say things like, well, go ahead and bill me, I'm not gonna pay. They have things called special assessments and under certain conditions, the city can take those forward to the county, have those added to the property taxes and, uh, recoup our money that way. We get to go down that road, but it's something that is going to occur.
It's a lot of water that's going and not being paid for. So in my opinion, again, you just have to make sure we're communicating with where we know the problems are at, making them aware that they are physically and financially responsible for that. And yes, the city could take care of it, but they will see a reflection of that cost placed back on them in some manner, whether it's taxes or whatever.
So if there's any further discussion or no further discussion, would the council be okay to take these suggestions and move forward with, uh, this process?
Definitely, and these are basically already in our water ordinance.
Right, but I mean to make sure that we get this thing moving and take care of it.
But what do you want us, what do you want to do then? You want to, you want to find the twenty-one we can't find, fix the one that there's spilling water or what do you want?
Well, you know, Tony was by himself for so long, he didn't have time to do all this. But now we got two guys and, and Harry's going after it, so we'll start sending letters.
So what do you want us to do?
The vacant ones at least, and the ones that don't work, the process is over yet.
There's, we can't replace them all by ourselves, but we'd have to hire someone else. There's sixteen of them that need to be replaced and twenty-two or twenty that can't be found, which probably would need to be replaced. Thirty-six.
Just basically need to start the process.
I'd say we start when we find everything first before we start all.
Well, sometimes you can't find them, like I said, Dave's been looking for them for years, Tony's been looking for them. Harry, we said we have Iowa Rural Water come up with their equipment and look for them, just.
We just have to locate from the inside the house.
And Iowa Rural Water has done that with some of the houses.
Locate to the main and dig down and see if there's a, you know.
So we know where sixteen of them are, do I just?
Sixteen of them that need replaced.
Sixteen, so we know where they are and we know they need replaced. In my opinion, that's where we start.
Do we have letters out to each of those owners yet?
No.
No.
Okay, we need to get letters out to them.
Anyone that they've told me about a letter hasn't sent you that.
So if he's got some more down there, we need to get those out. And if any of the letters are over thirty days, then we need to remind the people, I'm sorry, you were given thirty days, we're gonna have to go ahead and do it.
So what do we do with that one down here that's got two people in the line?
Well, that one, they were sent their letter like three years ago. So if I have to do their letter again, both of them, and give them the thirty days, if they don't get it done, then we'll have to go hire somebody or the guys, whatever, no, any other.
They're feeding off the same main, I mean, they don't each have their own line right in the house. So that's an additional possibility for another line in.
Whatever splits up.
Yeah, they put out, yeah.
And just so you know, anybody that's gonna replace that curb stop, that's not a fun task to do because that is a live situation. It can't be just anybody wanting to do that on your own because it is a live situation.
All right, well, so we just need to move ahead with that and that, we're ten minutes past.
Oh, should we argue?
We need to do, we need to do a public hearing, so we will go into a public hearing for the sale of a property. And this is the property across the street, there's five parcels there. And we have page here. This is the right one.
Yeah, that's when we're done and over with the public hearing. But you can look at the property, you should be here, there, yeah, those are the right.
The parcels are lot one, two, and three of block fourteen. Uh, the north, two feet of block, lot four, block fourteen. And the south, twenty feet of block four, block fourteen in the town of Rowl. So we have advertised that and we have received one bid on the property. So were there any questions with regard to that, sale of that property?
That's over here.
Yeah, it's all the, the empty lots, those, so, yeah, all the way to the road.
Okay, I don't hear anything, so we close the public hearing and we'll go into opening the bid. This is it.
Yep.
This is from UBI, City of Rowl. Please accept this letter for a bid for the United Bank of Iowa to purchase the following real property owned by the City of Rowl, um, the parcels that I just described. Um, I'd like to bid four thousand dollars in total for the parcel, which includes all, for the parcel, which includes lot one, two, and three and the north, two feet of block four and the south, twenty feet of block four in block fourteen. This is signed by Ernie Anulew, the operations and control and cashier group for UBI. So with that.
Motion to accept. I would do a, a resolution, I simply resolution seven thirty-two, authorizing the second. Houston, quit playing B between City of Rowl and the United Bank of Iowa.
Have a motion to follow that resolution now.
Uh, yeah, I make a motion, the resolution number one thirty-two.
Okay, do I have a second? Dan seconds, any discussion? We'll call both, Aaron?
Yay.
Yes.
Dan, back.
All right.
Al? All right, unanimous. If they were running, you weren't lots. Al, still a bit misphrased.
What's that?
That was what we just did.
Yeah, that's what we just did, that's done.
All right, so we're done with that, now we'll go back to hometown pride coach.
Well, first, Aaron. I've known Eric since he was hot. He's the neighbor of my mom and dad's in Hubble, so.
You've not looked all her dead right now.
Anyway, glad you're on board as counsel. Okay, so mine is about, um, Margot Underwood, who is our hometown pride coach. And we're asking to renew her position for the year of twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. On behalf of hometown pride, we're asking the council to renew Margot Underwood's position as Keep Iowa Beautiful Coach for Rowl Community for the year of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Our group feels Margot has given us ideas on grants, examples, our hometowns foundation, Keep Iowa Beautiful paint grants, trees forever alive, trees grants, just to name a few. Plus others that we could apply for to help keep the city of Rowl beautiful. She helps advise us when writing the grants, so we have the right to approach her on these grants. Over the years, we have received over a hundred thousand dollars in grants, I was just kind of doing that in my head. And, because we've gotten some really good grants, we've gotten some really small grants, we have received a lot of grants. And basically it's because of you helping us.
Or no, waving the flag.
I thought you were waving. Okay, Margot also attends our meetings and she writes up the agendas, which is a great help. So we know what we need to do for the coming months until the month's end. So I just hope to come and tell the vote yes to renew her position. That's it. So, no.
All right.
So we make a motion to renew her for twenty-four, twenty-five, she is an excellent asset to the community.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Aaron seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll, 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 thank you.
Thank you.
She already sent me a bill and they approved the bill. The same number here, eight hundred and eighty dollars to keep Iowa beautiful.
Was it eight hundred and eighty?
Yes, they never changes.
Next item up is to approve the liquor license for Sunny Brook on Main. They've had no violations. We won't need to do any discussion on that, so I have a motion to go ahead and approve the liquor license for Sunny Brook on Main.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is ordinance two forty-one, final reading. So this is, uh, an ordinance repealing, amending, or replacing sections of chapter ninety-two for water rates, chapter ninety-nine for sewer rates, and chapter one-ten, the natural gas utility, uh, for quota ordinances for the city. And essentially, it's the same in all three ordinances. Each customer shall pay a monthly maintenance charge of ten dollars for any unused connections, including vacant properties with the exemption for deployed military personnel who will not be using water, gas, or sewer. This ten, ten dollar monthly maintenance charge is in addition to the monthly rates for the municipal utility. So this is a third reading, um, briefly touch here, sever building clause, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof, not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. When effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law. So on this third reading, do I have a motion to approve this?
I would approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve, I have a motion to second, we will call both, Aaron?
Yay.
Lana?
Yes.
Rob? Al?
Yep.
Dan?
Back.
All eyes approved. This eighth day of June twenty twenty-four.
It says July, you said June.
Did I say June?
Yeah, you did.
I guess I read it and somebody didn't change it.
No, it does, it says July.
It says July. I'm sorry.
That's right.
I apologize.
We so wanted to be June, you liked it too soon.
All right, next up is ordinance two forty-two. An ordinance amending the ordinances of the City of Rowl by adding a new chapter, chapter one sixty-one, which deals with the subject is abandoned and vacant buildings. And, uh, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, it's multiple pages. Essentially, it is going to be a new ordinance that requires that there is a, um, obviously the owners take responsibility for their properties and there will be a, um, system set up so that they can, um, list or, uh, what's the word I wanna use here? Register their property and there will be an annual fee for that. What people should be aware of here is that for any of these, um, once this is adopted and you're required to register your vacant property, um, you will also be required to open it up for inspection prior to completing the registration process so that we know what the condition of the house is, then you'll have to put together a plan to either put it back in service or sell it, or whatever you're going to do. We've got too many vacant properties sitting around just falling apart and the people don't seem to want to do anything with them at all. So this is gonna be a way to hopefully So, this is going to be a way to hopefully make our town a little bit better. These buildings, um, can be considered public nuisance if they're not fixed up, or they're not actively marketed for sale, or they're not rented out, lived in. So there's all sorts of stuff there, and even your packages, so I'm not going to read anymore on that. There's a repealer here, says all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Same severability clause, when effective, it will be, uh, from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law. So, this is a third reading, so do I have a motion to accept this? New ordinance, or actually to approve this new ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Dan second. We'll call both, Aaron.
Yay.
Yes.
Al. Rob.
Yep.
Dan.
Right.
All eyes. Okay, so, passed and approved and adopted by this council the eighth day of July twenty twenty-four. All right, next up will be chapter one fifty-one, which deals with trees. Our tree ordinance, uh, based on guidance we got from DNR and conservation and other people, especially going through this problem with the drainage district issue and the plugging of the tile, it was suggested that we remove any tree that could possibly, um, become an, an encumbrance to the stormwater draining system and also to the, uh, other utilities, especially the underground utilities. So, um, in here, it was suggested that we replace the existing, um, paragraph that deals with planting restrictions with new planting restrictions. The old ones were, you could plant something in the area called the parking, which is between the sidewalk and curb. Had to be so many feet from the sidewalk or the curb, so far from the corner, tree had to cover so many square feet, yada, yada, yada. It's been suggested change, um, here it has been, to preclude the potential damage to city utilities, the following applies. Notification shall be made to statewide notification center eight-one-one, one call, whatever you want to call it, to provide notice of the planned excavation prior to planting any tree or shrub. This followed under the Code of Iowa, section three eighty-four. It's mandated by law, and you must contact them before you dig. No tree or shrub should be planted by property owners or residents in any parking or street, same area, uh, within the city's corporate boundaries. Existing trees or shrubs within that area shall be allowed to remain unless found by the city council to be unhealthy, diseased, or substantially weather damaged. Located where any overhead utility, electric cable, telephone lines are present, located within twenty-five feet of any stormwater utility intake or drainage tile, where location interferes with underground communications, which is capable of telephone, the electric, or the city's natural gas, sanitary sewer, water service, and stormwater utilities. For public parks and green spaces and private property, trees shall be planted in accordance with the following, no closer than thirty feet from the street intersections, property lines extended, ten feet from driveways, and within ten feet inside the property lines. This is to preclude any possible, um, root damage to the utilities plus upheaval of, of the existing sidewalks. We have quite a bit of that, as you can see, going down Main Street here. No closer than half the distance of the mature height of the tree to any overhead electrical line, no closer than one-fourth of the mature height to the tree, to, of the tree, to any underground electric or city natural gas line, no fruit, nut, or seed-bearing, seed pod-bearing trees within twenty feet of any public sidewalk or street or alley. A good example of this was the crab apple tree that was on the other corner over here that, um, Milligan's did take down and take it out because that thing was dropping stuff on the street, ended up stepping on it and, um, it's not a good thing. Last thing is prohibited trees and shrubs, pretty much as it was before. Any commonly known as cottonwood, box elder, or Chinese elm, or any species known to be invasive or a nuisance. I know we're bode to have an issue with, somebody brought aspen trees from Colorado in, and aspen trees, they love to find water, so they will send out roots three or four times bigger than the, the height of the tree to find water, and they will do damage, so we don't need anything like that. Um, the duty to trim trees remains the same, the owner or agent of the abutting property shall keep the trees on. Where overhanging these tree trims and the dome branches are at least fifteen feet above the surface of the street and eight feet above sidewalks.
Redon, um, because if they reach these changes, then we'll do a formal ordinance, and it'll be on the table for everybody to see.
So anyway, this is, this is based on what we, uh, took home from, or took this home from, these different groups. And so, what I'd like to see is, is there any interest in pursuing this as written, or, you know, chewing for a while, or?
Unfortunately, we've got to have some guidelines. Or we'll just keep having more problems, and we already got a hundred and seventy-four ones to take down.
Yep.
So, we need a motion to do that, or?
So we want to, we can pursue, then just doing a formal campaign through the, through the ordinance itself, and doing just what we did with the last two resolutions we just did.
Ordinances.
The resolutions, I mean.
We've got, these are ordinances we missed, right?
So I made a motion to move forward with this. All right, do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aaron seconds. I see his hand moving. My mouth just kept moving, sorry.
There's no discussion, then, all approved, for all?
Yes.
What all wants to say here, because we just haven't given the length of words.
Those are papers.
So we have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next item up is memorial trees. Lana and her husband are out west, um, stealing thunder.
Yes.
And so, let her speak to it.
I know it's kind of sick sounding, but in our fifty, I think it's what, fifty-two years coming up, um, I think this year was our twentieth year to go to the Canadian Rockies for kind of stuff on. But, um, by accident, because of the title issue, we ended up in High River. And you don't need to know this, but High River is where they partially filmed, um, the TV show Heartland, so it was pretty cool. We went to the park where they used the gazebo several times, um, in the show. But what really impressed us was, and I don't know, it was the picture of this at all, kind of around there, it was really neat to see this board that said memorial trees on it, and of course, then there were actual little leaves that not only, of course, did the person purchase a tree and have it planted in a city property park. I'm not talking somebody's private property, I'm talking in that park or other parks in High River. And it's just, it's just spectacular. So it was neat that it gave recognition on this board with the little leaves that said so-and-so in memory of, and it would put the name. And it was just such an impressive display. And in my opinion, especially since we've got this doggone ash problem going on, I mean, also many trees that have to be replaced, um, I think it's a good remembrance of an individual, maybe that's no longer with us, or maybe you want to do it for someone that's living, I don't, you know, care why or reason is, I just think the whole concept of it is a good idea. I realize that the individual has to purchase the tree, I understand we have to figure out, and all the little leaf that gets made, you know, I'm sure there's, there's going to be expense occurred, you know, I haven't checked out who or what can do that, if it has to go through, um, all the business in Humboldt or whatever. We want to do it as inexpensive as we can, but yeah, we want something that's lasting and good taste, and represents not only our community, but that individual. So, I just make it as a recommendation in this unfortunate time of loss of our trees as a positive way to replace them.
And most schools got this and they can make those.
That's true.
And then that would get carried off what they were here for us.
That's a good suggestion, now, I didn't think about the school, the school could definitely take this on as a project.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
I'll say.
Who has a motion?
I guess it was.
Motion was to go ahead and initiate this.
I realize we have a board made so that the leaves can be placed on it or whatever, but. The pictures was a suggestion how they did it, and there could be other ideas.
Is that what they did at Eagle Grove, at the library, is that what that is? Have you ever seen that? Mary and Abby were there Sunday and on the library, and they got this big tree, and each leaf, it's made out of, uh, like, it's pottery, because they got their names in.
I think of pottery in the hailstones, I don't know.
Well, I know there's pottery, it looks like pottery.
Right. But I'm just a concept idea.
Is this what you're talking?
Uh, this, yeah, it, they had a tree painted on a board, and then all these leaves were placed on that board.
Just want to hear what they're truly doing, and then use that for example.
So, yeah, it'd be good to go by, maybe somebody's already got a plan that's kind of drawn up, and we can feed off that.
All right, so. You want to just look into getting the plaque made and getting?
Well, you got a motion by Lana, second, by Al, to initiate Memorial Tree Project, and we need this, is it all eyes, not? Yeah, the motion is second, that's it.
Yeah.
We need to ask.
So do I have a motion to approve?
They already did.
They already got that.
Now it's all eyes, now it's time for all eyes.
Okay, so it's approved, then?
Oh, yeah.
We have a lot of all eyes.
You got a motion in the second, that's it.
I just said it. Never mind. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Do I have an approval? Aaron, what did you say?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, do it. Ah, I'm confused.
Would it maybe be helpful, Angie, if we contacted, whether it be the library or a city clerk over at Eagle Grove, to find out maybe something about the gap plan? I, I can't, it won't, it won't be tomorrow, because I can't do all that.
What they did, oh, they, they had a steel for, for the trunk, and then they got it, it's all made out with everybody's names on it. It's really pretty cool, it is. Something that's on, the one thing that they did, it's pretty amateurish.
Yes. So you have some ideas about the concept of buy a tree, how a leaf.
Yeah, good idea. All right, uh, next up is planning resolution for the sale of two oh two Grant Street. Apparently they were administrative here.
No, this is just the third and final one.
All right. So this is.
Yeah, the new one was, you were stuck.
All right. Resolution approving and authorizing the sale of City of Rawl, City of Rawl real property parcel, lot seven, eight, and nine, block fifteen in the town of Rawl, also known as two oh two Grant Street. Uh, whereas the City of Rawl was the owner of these parcels, um, whereas in twenty twenty-four, the city agreed to sell the property to Martin and Phyllis Milligan for the sum of twenty-five dollars, did receive payment from the Milligans, and did convey the property to the Milligans by quick claim deed, and whereas it is now contented by the subsequent purchase of the property that the City of Rawl did not substantially comply with the statutory, statutorially prescribed procedures in connection with the sale of the property to the Milligans, and whereas the City of Rawl desires and intends to resolve any questions concerning the sale of the property to the Milligans, whereas at the regular city council meeting April twenty-second, the Rawl City Council passed resolution seven twenty-five proposing the sale of the property, scheduling a public hearing, and directing publication and notice, and whereas, an appropriate notice was prepared and published in accordance with the requirements of section three sixty-two point three of the Code of Iowa, and whereas the City of Rawl has now held the public hearing on the proposed sale, and has determined the sale should be accomplished. Now therefore be resolved by the city council as follows. Section one, sale of the property to Martin and Milligan, Martin and Phyllis Milligan is hereby approved and authorized. Section two, the city attorney was directed to prepare, and the mayor and city clerk have executed on behalf of the city an appropriate quick claim deed dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, conveying the property from the city to Martin and Milli, Martin and Phyllis Milligan, husband and wife, as joint tenants with full rights of survivorship and not as tenants in common. Section three, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed. Section four, if any section, provision, or part of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the resolution or as a whole, or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section five, this resolution shall be in effect after its final passage and approval as provided by law. So, I need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve, resolution number, whatever Angie says it is, seven thirty-three?
I have a second, third. Rob second, so we need, we'll call both.
With Dan. We got it.
All right, Al.
Yep.
Rob.
All right.
Dan, right. Aaron.
Yay.
Lana. All eyes. All right. Next item up is nuisance abadings, um, Nate Christiansen, the, uh, guy from Louisville that, uh, is going to be doing, has done some of our letters, is, uh, going to be coming back over, don't have an exact date yet, he's been extremely busy with the City of Correctionville because they got flooded out. And so, he's been helping them, um, with trying to get through their, their issues over there, so as soon as that clears up a little bit, um, he'll be coming over to sway there. To continue on with, uh, surveying the different properties in town, following up on the letters that were sent out to people in good faith, um, determining who, who in good faith has complied and who doesn't feel they need to comply, and then we'll take it to the next step. And with that, I don't have anything else, does anybody in the council have anything? And with that, I don't have anything else, does anybody in the council have anything? Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Who did your?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I adjourned that.